We're ready, Mr. -- there we go. Okay, the Falkir County School Board meeting is called to order and at this time, Dr. Check is going to lead us in the pledge. If you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right. We'll give Ms. Riordan a second to join us.
No, that's okay, I'm good.
Yeah. And Ms. Callahan, if you would, please take the roll and record. And at this time, if there are--
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the agenda as written.
A second?
Motion and a second, that the agenda be adopted as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we move to announcements. The Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board meeting scheduled for Thursday, May 16th, is canceled. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There will be a Parks and Recreation Co-op meeting Tuesday, May 21st, in the Alice Jane Childs Building Basement Conference Room at 6:00 PM. There will be a Building Committee meeting Thursday, May 23rd, at 9:30 AM in the School Administration Conference Room. Chairman's Night will be Tuesday, May 28th, at 5:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a School Board Work Session Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room, and that is Tuesday night, not Monday night, everybody. Get that. There will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, June 5th, at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Meeting Building Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, June 5th, at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. There will be a School Support Council meeting Thursday, June 6th, at 7:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. Kettle Run High School graduation will be Friday, June 7th, at 6:00 PM in Cougar Stadium, and that is rain or shine. Is that correct?
Right. No rain.
Shine, please.
Rain, sleet, or snow?
Falkir High School graduation will be Saturday, June 8th, at 8:00 AM at Falcon Field, and Liberty High School graduation will be Sunday, June 9th, at 3:00 PM at Jiffy Lube Live. And the next school board meeting is Monday, June 10th, at Falkir High School in the Falcon Room. A reception for honorees will be held from 6:00 to 6:30, and I believe that reception is in the lobby?
Yes.
Area. And recognitions will be held from 6:30 until 7:00, when the regular meeting will begin. And at this time, we have several special presentations that we want to make, and Board, just move down front for a few minutes. Join us?
Dr. Mitchell, would you join us?
Oh, shouts.
I got something to get up today. Go ahead.
Am I first?
Yeah, you go first.
I'm sorry, I can never just do these on the fly, I have to read them, because it's so important that we honor Dr. Mitchell fully. And I'm going to start my comments about Dr. Mitchell with the same exact statement I started when paying tribute to Dr. Jonathan Lewis, and that is, I believe it was no accident that Dr. Sandra Mitchell was our leader during these past four months. Of the 64 months I've been on the Board, without a doubt, the past four were some of the most difficult. She experienced demanding situations and was called on to make many difficult decisions. The weight of the events at Sandy Hook, middle school redistricting, changes in employee pay schedules, health insurance, middle school scheduling, new leadership, and then finally, of course, the budget. And it was perfect that Dr. Mitchell was our leader. This was a time when it was so easy to forget why we do what we do. We needed someone who could help us focus on the main thing, our students. Dr. Mitchell was exactly the right person. This was a time when we needed someone who deeply understood, could genuinely empathize with our employees, and someone who they could trust. Dr. Mitchell was definitely that person. This was a time when we needed a leader who could take on challenges, be so courageous, and think outside the boxes box. Dr. Mitchell was certainly that person. This was a time when we needed a leader who was thorough, detailed, and who could methodically and clearly explain the concept, the decision, the process, or the reasoning. And Dr. Mitchell is absolutely that person. And finally, we needed a confident, yet humble person who could step back, take another look, genuinely listen, and acknowledge that there might be another path. And Dr. Mitchell, without a question, is that person, and we cannot thank you enough. So, thank you. A little more lighter note. We know one of the things that you have been dying to say for the last four months, so we made you a little sign to put in your office. And it says, "Please." And just in case, I don't know what he looks like, but how much information he has, you have--
Right there.
And his dog is-- That's right. And then, just in case, as a school board member and as on staff, you're always, people meet you on the street or whatever, and just in case you meet you on the street, you got your little hand hill.
All right, wait a minute. Either of y'all mind ass? Anything?
Ass?
Ass, anything.
Oh, you know--
Okay.
It's like I shared with her before, she performed, obviously, and I knew she would. I knew, though she was a little bit apprehensive at first, but once she got in, everything was fine. They did an outstanding job, and I sincerely appreciate you saying yes.
Absolutely. That's right.
Yeah, I do want to say, the ability you have to communicate a vision clearly and succinctly is tremendous, and I know as a school board member, I've learned a lot the past four or five months from you, so really appreciate everything you've done and the clarity of what you speak.
Thank you is not enough, that's all I can say.
Well, I'm just going to say, we asked her to fill some pretty big shoes, and she did, and more, so we have a little small gift. It's for a section shoe store. Dr. Mitchell, you need a new pair of shoes!
I do want to say, I have to, I do have to thank our staff. Dr. Check, you are getting the best school board staff you could possibly, and the instructional staff, what you stepped up to do while I was away, though I thought I was there, but I was not. I really appreciate you, Marcy and Janelle and Janison, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And at this time, we also want to recognize a couple retirees. Are we going to have those--
Christine Meschetti, I think Dave Graham would like to say a few words.
Okay.
Watch it, if you're getting together, Mark.
Christine, you want to come up?
I'd like to echo too, for Dr. Mitchell, listening to her here, working with her, same thing. Thank you for all your support for the last few months, absolutely, we were in good hands, we know that. And moving on, two principals of mine tonight--
You all are having trouble hearing me? Okay, is this any better? But two principals of mine, Mr. Seitz and is moving on, my principal back in high school, and when I started out teaching, and then the last 14 years, my partner here, Ms. Meschetti, and anybody that knows Ms. Meschetti knows how much of a fan of reading she is, and interesting story about Christine, or really a neat story, is that every time we've had a book fair, she's always made the point to find a donor or somebody that can help out and see to it that all of our students that may not have the opportunity to have a book due. And that's been great to give out those passes to those kids through the years, and that's been because she's made that happen. And so tonight, I'm glad to be able to repay some of those books to you, and I have two of our students, and two special students, because these two young men, Michael Lyons and my son, David Graham, basically have been raised at Marshall Middle School, and she also is kind of neat to watch through the years, as these young men would go to the book fair. Come over here for just a second. As we go to the book fair, she'd always kind of say, was there anything there that you boys kind of were looking at at the book fair, and lo and behold, it would end up maybe on somebody's desk the next day. So, this is, I think that I'm very happy to be able to repay some of those books with some of her kids that she's really made an impact on. Thank you.
We're not going to let you get away that easy, Mrs. Meschetti. Not only does the school board, administration, the folks at Marshall Middle School, the parents, teachers, students, not only are we going to miss you, but we are going to, I know, one day, wish that you were back here with us. Even though Dave is going to have some pretty big shoes to fill, nothing or no plan, we know that. You leave a rich history of accomplishments, you have in-depth knowledge of the education system, and all of that, it's going to be hard to substitute, it's going to be hard to replace, because all of that is you. You built it, and we sincerely appreciate everything that you have done, everything that you are doing, and everything that we know that you will continue to do for the students, not just in Falkir County, but wherever you land, we know that.
Well, I've threatened to hide them.
I'll be close. And sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Give us our hearts.
Appreciate it.
Good kind of love.
Thank you very much.
Let Elaine call us.
Who's up? Over here. Mr. Seitz? He's hiding! Come on, Mr. Seitz.
Last time you'd be embarrassed. No, not quite. Okay.
No, that's before, probably.
I have a singing group here called the Platinum Four, and they're going to send him off with a wonderful farewell.
Come on.
All of you, all of you going to attach all the bar.
I'm Maggie Lovehart.
I'm John Chanty. You're a top scout.
I'm Doug Davis. And you're at the Platinum School.
Mr. Seitz. You rock our socks. You fill our days with motivating talks. Mr. Seitz, you'll go down in history with your dedication, and your hair still remains in history. Forty years at the school, we think that's pretty cool, and we love you so much, Raji. Why can't you see? We hate to see you leave. We know you're ready to go.
Mr. Seitz is a cutie, he's not very sweet, he's loving and fun, he gets work done, he's a bobby forever, close like birds on a feather, bobby in his cup, Mr. Seitz knows what's up.
Word!
Once I was a high school student.
Yeah.
I had a really awesome principal.
Principal.
He was super silly.
Yeah.
He gets started our school musical, and we were dancing and singing and moving to the grooving, and just when it hit me, somebody turned around and shouted, "Mr. Seitz is leaving Falkir!"
Oh, no!
"Mr. Seitz is leaving now! Mr. Seitz is leaving Falkir! Best wishes for your future."
We will miss you every day.
We got a couple more. We're not going to let them go that easy.
And now the waterworks.
When the bell has rung, and class is out, we'll remember the smiles that we shared. Though we'll be happy to go, we might shed a tear reminiscing on the times throughout the years. Mr. Seitz, without your support, we wouldn't be who we are today, so we're here to sing and to say, darling, darling, we will miss you, oh, we will miss you, oh, Mr. Seitz, we will miss you.
Mr. Seitz, we'd like to give Mr. Seitz a present.
On behalf of Dr. Mitchell.
Yes, exactly.
Thanks, everyone.
He's the man.
I pray they don't, they're all dead.
Well, I'll explain this to them.
Are you going to say it too?
No, no. Some of you may remember, at Complication last year, I talked about, a little bit about how Falkir County schools, for me, is family, and gave a lot of examples, and one of them was that when Duke and I were just young things, and we won't say how many years ago, right, walking the halls of Falkir High School, Roger was there, roaming the halls. And it has been a lot, 40 years, 45 years, and I don't know if people understand how much you give up when you have spent 45 years giving to Falkir High School and the Falkir High School community. And you've, I mean, you know, that's your life, been your life, and for that, we are all eternally grateful, and we know that he's got that little farm that he wants to spend a lot of time at, and we also know he's got a lot of grandchildren that he wants to spend some time with, so... We couldn't get the real thing.
That's my car.
If I can get it out of here. But we got, well, you can, this will be your star. I guess. And then there's--
And remember, we have a school division YouTube channel, so you can watch.
Okay, folks, that worked.
You know this is going to be a tough act to follow.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, everybody. I will add that we're glad to have Dr. Check sitting here with us tonight, and he did receive a welcome also. We did that last, last week, week before, whenever, your first day.
I got a tremendous welcome from Dr. Mitchell, I'll tell you that.
Okay. I do not believe there is a response to Citizens Time, so we will move into Citizens Time tonight, and the school board appreciates public input, however, due to time constraints, Citizens Time is not a time for dialogue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues should not be discussed. The school board welcomes the public's comments and believes community involvement is an important component of a successful school division. And I believe I have two names. The first one is Kathy Fine. If you would, please come to the podium and state your name and magisterial district, and we'll give you three minutes, and I'm not sure if the lights are working or not.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy Fine. I'm the president of the Band Boosters at Kettle Run High School. I'm center district. We'd like to also thank Dr. Sandra Mitchell for her service as acting superintendent of schools while our elected school board members conducted their search for our new superintendent, Dr. Check. Welcome to Falkir County.
Thank you.
At last month's school board meeting, Roger Miller brought to the board a petition signed by 924 people who opposed cuts in middle school music programming. On behalf of the petition signers, which is now over 1,000, we'd like to thank you, our school board members, and thank Dr. Mitchell for your decision to postpone any actions on middle school programming until the fall. Your decision will allow Dr. Check time to transition into his new position prior to lending his expertise and vision to such an important issue. As voting, tax-paying citizens of Falkir County, we look forward to working with all of you to find a truly equitable solution to middle school programming, should it later be determined that any changes are warranted. In either case, we remain united in opposition to any future cuts in music programming at our middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, Patricia Baker.
Good evening, Dr. Check, school board members. Madam Chair, I'm Pat Baker, I'm president of the Falkir Education Association, and three minutes just isn't really enough time, but I promise to sit down this time. We have a big problem. Unfortunately, I'm sure that every teacher in the classroom, every assistant, every bus driver, every food service, every custodian, we all love working. We all love working with our children. We all love supporting the children, and we know you do too. You put a lot of time in, you put extra hours in. You get elected, you want to do this job. We would ask, I would ask, on behalf of nearly 600 members, that you reconsider the healthcare proposal that you have tonight. I noticed that on the agenda, you're going to be moving it to possible action, which would take place tonight. We do not understand why the county employees enjoy better plans with the same price that we all paid last year. You have removed one of the high option plans. For some of us, 30, 40 years of paying for high option meant we paid higher premiums for a reason. We preferred that plan, and we were willing to pay more. We did last year with a 20% increase. And now, because there's $500,000, and that's what Falkir now said, I saw in the budget 800, but I'm reading 500,000. Because of that 500,000, you can cut healthcare down to two plans. Not only has it cut to two plans, but the plan that is less, well, optimal for us, is also costing more than the higher plan last year. A family plan is $90 more a month for, some of our assistants work for insurance, they will be bringing home, they'll be owing you, they will be writing a check after they get their paycheck to pay for their family's healthcare. It's $90 more a month for a school employee. The Board of Supervisors say their employees haven't had a raise, and because we have a raise, the Board of Supervisors will also say, "We give your board the money, it's up to them how they spend it." And for some reason, because there is a budget deficit, the healthcare for your employees just seemed like a really great way to get 500,000 to 800,000. It is not a good way. Teachers in 2008 received $1,500, which was due the year before, and they were making at Step 30 with an MA roughly $71,826. If you froze us since 2008, but gave a 9% increase, next year's salary should be 78,464 for an employee with 30 or more years. In actuality, Step 30 is going to be 70,678, which means they will be making $7,000 less in five years' time with the 9% increase. We cannot afford the salary with this cut and this increase in healthcare cost. Please, if nothing else, just recess and see. You're going to get half a million dollars in January. Put something on hold and then apply that half a million to that, or to pay us, pay people a stipend for that. I thank you for your time, and really, it is very serious. Teachers cannot stay in Falkir County with the pay and the healthcare. Thank you.
Okay, we move to reports, and we'll start over here on my left, Ms. Riordan.
I don't have any report this morning.
Okay. Ms. Wolf.
I just wanted to thank Christine Meschetti and Roger Seitz for their long years of service to all our students, and a major welcome to Dr. Check here tonight. This is great. The Finance Committee, we didn't really have anything to report other than the reports you're going to see, and the Health Advisory Committee meeting was postponed to a later date. I just want to thank Amy Cooler, who is a counselor with the Boy Scouts, for Troop Number 1187 in Beelton. I guess one of the things that the Scouts do is they have a badge where they need to find a topic that they're interested in, find the elected official who's in charge of that, and then interview them. And they invited me with their scouting group last week to come speak with them. These Scouts were awesome. They asked questions about bus routes, about SOLs, about funding, special education lunches. I mean, it was really quite extensive. But I just would like to suggest, another time again, bring it up again, that I would like this board to revisit some sort of student participation in our board, and I have some new ideas about how we could do that, rather than just have somebody sit here and, I think we could really, we could really gain a lot of knowledge from them, and I think it would really make a major impact in a student's life. And then on Tuesday, May 7th, Dr. Mitchell and I went to Washington DC to watch the event honoring, here, hold on, I'm having a problem, attend the Washington Post Educational Leadership Award for Steve Parker, and we brought back programs, I think, for y'all to look at. It was incredible to be in the presence of all these great leaders and to see us be so greatly represented by Steve Parker. And all of his family was there, all of his children, his three children, his wife Karen, and also his father from Pennsylvania. But an interesting note is his mother could not be there, and his mother could not be there because his grandmother was receiving the award for Volunteer of the Year for the entire state of Nils. Teachers in 2008 received $1,500, which was due the year before, and they were making at Step 30 with an MA roughly $71,826. If you froze us since 2008 but gave a 9% increase, next year's salary should be 78,464 for an employee with 30 or more years. In actuality, Step 30 is going to be 70,678, which means they will be making $7,000 less in five years' time with the 9% increase. We cannot afford the salary with this cut and this increase in health care cost. Please, if nothing else, just recess and see. You're gonna get half a million dollars in January. Put something on hold and then apply that half a million to that, or to pay us, pay people a stipend for that. I thank you for your time, and really, it is very serious. Teachers cannot stay in Falkir County with the pay and the health care. Thank you.
Okay, we move to reports, and we'll start over here on my left. Ms. Rudin?
I don't have any report this morning.
Okay. Ms. Wolf.
I just wanted to thank Christine Machete and Roger Seitz for their long years of service to all our students, and a major welcome to Dr. Jek here tonight.
This is great.
The finance committee, we didn't have, really have anything to report other than the reports you're gonna see, and the health advisory committee meeting was postponed, postponed to a later date. I just wanna thank Amy Cooler, who is a counselor with the Boy Scouts, for troop number 1187 in Beelton. I guess one of the things that the scouts do is they have a badge where they need to find a topic that they're interested in, find the elected official who's in charge of that, and then interview him. And I, they invited me with their scouting group last week to come speak with them. These scouts were awesome. They asked questions about bus routes, about SOLs, about funding, special education lunches. I mean, it was really quite extensive. But I just would like to suggest another time again, bring it up again, that I would like this board to revisit some sort of student participation in our board. And I have some new ideas about how we could do that, rather than just have somebody sit here and, I think we could really, we could really gain a lot of knowledge from them, and I think it would really make a major impact in a student's life. And then on Tuesday, May 7th, Dr. Mitchell and I went to Washington DC to watch the event honoring, here, hold on, I'm having a problem, attend the Washington Post Educational Leadership Award for Steve Parker. And we brought back programs, I think, for y'all to look at. It was incredible to be in the presence of all these great leaders and to see us be so greatly represented by Steve Parker. And all of his family was there, all of his children, his three children, his wife Karen, and also his father from Pennsylvania. But an interesting note is his mother could not be there. And his mother could not be there because his grandmother was receiving the award for Volunteer of the Year for the entire state of New York from the governor of New York.
Wow.
So the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So really, a great, great thanks to Steve Parker. And then, again, on Friday, I had the great honor to attend the Liberty High School Cooperative Education Appreciation Luncheon. Sondra Colvin, Valerie Hermes, and Pat Woodward just do a great job. And for those not familiar with the Cooperative Education Program, it provides a structured method for kids to combine classroom-based education with a real-life practical work experience. And the employers were, just a tremendous amount of employers. In fact, at the circuit court where I work, we have a student there with us, and it's just been really great. So thanks to Liberty High School for giving those students that great opportunity. And finally, with last week being Teacher Appreciation Week, I would just like to express my heartfelt appreciation to our teachers and to all of our employees. I know that the continued and prolonged resource, but limited resources puts ever-increasing demands on all of our employees, which means you are doing more for less. And it is your continued dedication and willingness to do whatever it takes to serve our students that has buffered this community from the real and lasting impact of these continued budget cuts. And you, our employees, deserve a tremendous appreciation. So thank you deeply. That's it.
Mr. Borne.
I would like to thank, I've seen some volunteerism in our schools recently, and really wanna thank the people who volunteered. But more importantly, there's an unrecognized position that goes on in our schools, and it's those staff people, those teachers who coordinate volunteers and who give up a lot of extra time. There's a lot of people doing that in these, in these schools. I happened to volunteer for something and realized what a pain in the backside I've been to people trying to coordinate me, and I just can't imagine. And I just wanna thank them, because it, you know, there's a lot of parents out there who wanna be involved in their children's education, volunteering the schools, and I wanna thank them. And also, just, I think we may hear about it later, and you may read about it, but there is a volunteer at Bradley that we lost this week. And, and just in that, in that sort of knowledge and in reflection of that, I just wanna thank all the people in our schools who coordinate these volunteers. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, Ms. Borne.
Okay, just bear with me now, okay?
Yeah.
I'm gonna try to cover a lot of bases here tonight. I'm gonna start off with the Personnel Committee meeting. There were two key recommendations coming out of the Personnel Committee meeting that we had here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not gonna steal in the thunder from Ms. Downs. Ms. Downs is gonna be talking about two needed teaching positions that do come before you as recommended by the Personnel Committee, okay? Building Committee, I'm gonna give you a pretty lengthy readout of all the things that's been going on, particularly with Falkir High School. And one, if I miss, if I, if there's a miscue or something here, please, please correct me as I go through this, okay? Phase one, there's so much that has been done, and we're still on budget. I'm gonna share with you some of the things that we're still working on. The connection of the building addition to the pre-existing building will be completed during the summer 2013. We're still working on a few punch list items, programming, adjustment, commissioning, and training of our mechanical, mechanical controls and electrical systems. That's still undergoing, ongoing. Completion of the larger chemistry shelving, have we, we're on?
June 10th, sir.
June the 10th on that one, okay? Also, the Falcon Room window shade and the physics lab, those cabinets and everything on, on schedule. Some of the closeout procedures and documentation. The definition of the 1963 100, 200 wing and associated landscaping will be started after school ends on June the 7th, correct? Okay. Here's a biggie. Staff is evaluating the potential reuse of a lot of the furniture, classroom furniture. And it's a possibility that we could save anywhere from, what, 50 to 75% of, and reuse that classroom furniture, saving us a lot of money, okay? Let's see. Under Phase Two, the Performing Arts Center, the site work, definition, foundations, and steel structure, and interior partitioning, all that framing for the 500 and 600 wings are nearly completed now, if not complete, but near completion. The masonry walls, the exterior walls, all of that is already started in progress, and the existing stage floor will be completely renovated during the summer 2013. Phase Three is the renovation of the existing 500 wing and the biology wing, and converting the 1979 100, 200 wing to a separate building, that's the far end down there. The renovation of the administration area and biology, biology wing will begin as soon as school is over. So all of that, there's a lot of stuff being planned for this summer, to tap some loose ends, and to move into Phase Two and Phase Three, okay? Now, Wednesday and Thursday of this week, Dominion Power will be over at Falkir High School replacing the roof on the greenhouse, right? That's what I'm saying.
No.
I'm sorry, what is it? The nature?
Outdoor lab.
Outdoor lab. You're right, outdoor lab, okay? So if any of you are gonna chance to stop over and thank Dominion Power for the work that they're doing, it would certainly be appreciated, okay? Let's see. Mountain Vista, Vista Governor's School, April the 23rd, at the Warrenton Campus, they hosted a senior research symposium, and on the 24th, they did the same thing up at the Middletown Campus. May the 17th, the math and sci, it's Math and Science Day at King's Dominion. May the 19th, there's a senior banquet at the Bowling Green Country Club. And the 21st through the 23rd, the Virginia Junior Academy of Science will be held at Virginia Tech, okay? And one final note here, I attended Southeastern Schools 2013 Symposium last Friday, and it was simply out of this world again. Again, congratulations to those folks for a job well done. Some of the things that, the topics that they, that they had there at the Symposium, classics come alive, where students read novels and express their meanings in very creative ways. They talked about the Verdant Adventure up here off, was it Dr., gosh, Dr. Snyder's Adventure Land up there. They also had Art in Action with shadow boxes and spacecrafts and green yourself pictures. Let's see. Arts and Science, just a whole number of things that had to do with arts and sciences and, and visual and audio, great presentation. Dr. Mitchell was there, and I ran into, Dr. Jek, you were there as well. Great presentation again. These folks do an outstanding job year after year. So, I think I covered everything I was supposed to cover.
You sure? Okay, well, you've covered everything for me, so I'll see if there's anything that you'd like to say.
Well, it's been a great and very interesting last couple of weeks. And one of the things is, as Mr. Bland mentioned, the event at Southeastern, you know, every single one of those kids I, I spoke to engaged me in conversation, every single one. And that was very, very impressive. And that's actually something I've noticed in, in all the schools I've visited. Kids are willing to engage and have a conversation with adults, and that's all, that's the lost art these days. And I was so impressed by that. Every single one of those kids wanted to tell me about their project, tell me something about themselves, how much they love the school, et cetera, et cetera. So that was really an outstanding visit. And all my visits to schools have been great. I only have, I think, five or six more to go, but they've been really outstanding visits, and I'm very, very impressed by our staff and by our students in particular.
Good, good. Okay, we will move to the financial management report. Ms. Kotoff.
Yes, good evening. You have before you the report as of March 31st. It has been presented to the Finance Committee. It does represent us being 75% through the year. The one item I think I would like to point out is, as I've mentioned the last couple of months, we are watching food nutrition. As of the end of March, revenues and expenditures, expenditures had exceeded by roughly 234,000 over revenues. What you'll see next month is, April was a very strong sales month. As of the end of April, I'm just running the reports now and looking at it, the gap is down to about $61,000. So I did wanna point out, it's still on the watch list. We still will be paying in July and August expenses for salaries that will be accrued back without sales revenue, but it's looking much better.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Downs, Human Resource Department.
Good evening. Before you is a brief summary of the human resources activities for the month of April. Currently, we have begun to recruit for the school, school year 2013-14. We have 15 certified vacancies, and we currently have five classified vacancies. Any questions this evening?
And all we need is one Arabic teacher. The Arabic teacher, this is not for summer school, though, right?
No, this is for bright school year, yes.
It sounded like she's, she's recruiting for the school board there for a minute, didn't she?
Has everybody RSVP'd the retirement?
For retirement dinner?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Excellent.
And it's when?
June 3rd, Monday night, 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
I knew it.
Yeah.
Okay. She used to say 6 o'clock, right?
She said 5:30.
5:30?
I don't remember.
5:30? Okay.
Okay, then we move to consent agenda. There is a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve the following. Minutes of the April 8th school board meeting, April 15th special school board meeting and work session, April 22nd special school board meeting and work session, the payment of bills, personnel actions, principal evaluation standards and process, instructional resource professional standards, and religious exemption 051313 dot 1. Got it?
Motion and a second, that the school board approve the minutes of the April 8th school board meeting, the April 15th special school board meeting and work session, and April 22nd special school board meeting and work session. Payment of bills, personnel actions, principal evaluation standards and process, instructional resource professional standards, and religious exemption 051313 dot 1. Any discussion? I will just say that we're some interesting movement in the personnel actions. Mark Holmes is moving to Falkir. Back where you started.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chance to go back and give a little bit back to our house.
That's right, that's right. And a new assistant principal for Mr. Warner. Is she excited or not? Oh, okay. I couldn't tell. One, I'm real sure. Yes, congratulations. Yep. Okay, then, all those in favor, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no, and motion carries. Congratulations. Then we move to information items, and Ms. Borne?
You're gonna do?
Yes, ma'am. The pre-Labor Day waiver. Did y'all get the waiver in Green County?
Yes.
Every year? Yeah.
We get it every year, 'cause Nelson's in our, was in our region. So we piggybacked on them.
Gotcha.
Pardon me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Well, I think I'm.
Nobody told me. Yeah.
This is just for information?
Yes, ma'am.
This is to inform you that Falkir County Public Schools for the upcoming school year once again qualifies for a pre-waiver, Labor Day opening exemption. We have met the requirement for good cause. We have, in five of the last 10 years, we've averaged 10.8 days being closed. Not that that's a great thing, but it does allow us to open before Labor Day, and so that we will qualify again next year. Any questions?
Thank you. No, it's great. Yeah.
Could we, sir? Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
Let's do that.
Yeah. I'll just ask you, if you don't mind, Ron, it's Ron Holmes, correct?
Mark.
Mark, sorry? I was so close. And Megan Brill, if you all don't mind standing up so we can welcome you formally.
Okay, then we move to Dr. Downey. High School Social Science Selective Textbook Adoptions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Jek. Tonight, I'm presenting information regarding the adoption of four textbooks for high school social science elective courses. These are the courses that we are requesting textbooks for, our Economics AP, Psychology, Psychology AP, and Sociology, and we haven't done an adoption since 2003. So we are in need of new textbooks in those areas. We have had teams of teachers that have worked over the course of the year evaluating quite a number of textbooks, and they've narrowed it down to the four that are in the, in your information packet. Those textbooks are now available for the public to look at. They're at the old Central Elementary School, the textbook office, and they'll be there for two weeks for the public to, to review. The teachers reviewed the textbooks, the teams of teachers, the standards that they looked at were for the, for the Psychology AP and the Economics AP. They use the AP College Board curriculum as the standards to evaluate the textbooks by. And for the Psychology textbook, they use the American Psychological Association's recommended curriculum for high school sociology, psychology course. And likewise, for the Sociology textbooks, textbook, they use the National, the American, Council of the American Sociological Association also has standards for high school sociology course, and those were used. For each course, we're requesting textbooks. Of course, they come now with all kinds of additional online resources, which are really wonderful. We did go through the process of looking and see, do we need a textbook, or can we just use online resources? We came to the conclusion that we really need the textbook supplemented by the online resource, and we think that this will work best. And the total cost, we're estimating, it'll be about $65,000 for the textbooks for these four courses. We would like to, for you to consider this. We'll put it back on the agenda next month, June 10th, and hopefully it'll be, excuse me, yeah, June 10th, and hopefully it'll be approved then. And if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or at your work session. Okay, any questions now?
Thank you. Work session. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Poehler. Health Education Textbook Adoption.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board, and Dr. Jek. I'm requesting that the school board approve at the June 10th meeting, the adoption of textbooks and resources for health, for use in K through 5 health, 6 through 8 health, and 9 through 12, I mean, 9 through 10 health courses in the county. The health books themselves were last adopted in 2003. We had a family life adoption in 2008, but most of the things we have right now are out of date, and in some cases, they are in poor condition. We had a unique situation this time because we've never really addressed the quote-unquote "teaching of health" in the elementary schools. So I just wanna take a moment and tell you what we did. I had a committee that we, of teachers, we took a look at the health standards, okay, and we gave them back to teachers and said, "Which ones of these do you already teach within the realm of your PE courses?" And then I looked at them as well and found some that were already taught by science teachers in the K through 5 realm, and guidance counselors, 'cause they do a lot of character ed, and they come into the classrooms and, and do that. So we agreed on some resources for the K through 5 PE teachers to be able to use, not textbooks for the individual students, but for the PE teachers to, to use as they try to. textbooks for the individual students, but for the PE teachers to use as they try to do some health with their students. So that's where that came from. Then we are suggesting that we adopt 6 through 8 health books, okay, by Houghton Mifflin, Harcourt, and also high school, the same thing. We looked at our standards of learning for health, and we looked at our family life education standards too that the state has. And we found that these health books cover all of that. And so there should be no need for supplementary information for drugs and violence and family life education. And one of the great things about this is that they do have an online portion for the teachers, and the thing that our teachers liked the most about that was that they guaranteed that their statistics would be really up to date on teenage pregnancies, on drugs, on, you know, that type of thing. Because if, as my high school teachers told me, if they don't have the right statistics, the students will tell them very much what those statistics are because they look at them all the time. So we want to try to keep them as informed as we possibly can. So I'd like that to be on your agenda for next month to adopt. The budget impact will be $164,282.14?
No?
Eighty-one cents. And the other piece is that we'll try to have classroom sets for everyone instead of giving students, you know, because they don't need to take them home, they can use a classroom set. So that's a savings for us too. I'll be willing to answer any questions that you have right now or at the work session?
Work session.
Work session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No, isn't Dr. Burg next?
Marketing? Mine says marketing.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay. Mine doesn't, but that's okay.
That's all right, we're good.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Jenk. Tonight, for your information, I would like to highlight the key features of the vocabulary program recommendation you have before you. I'm asking the board to adopt the Sadler Vocabulary Workshop, the Sadler Vocabulary for Success, and the teacher-created materials Building Vocabulary from Word Roots text at your June meeting. The Vocabulary Adoption Committee is recommending programs that will meet the standards for vocabulary development for grades 5 through 12 in the most recent Virginia Standards of Learning. Currently, we do not have a program in place to systematically develop students' knowledge of Greek and Latin word roots and affixes, and the Level 2 and Level 3 vocabulary that students need to know in order to be successful across their secondary curriculum and in preparation for college. Research has shown that a large vocabulary is predictive of and reflective of high levels of reading achievement. Vocabulary development also aids in improving students' background knowledge necessary for comprehension. As you can see from the sample lesson included in your information packet, Vocabulary Workshop, the program we are recommending for our core instruction, addresses a variety of nonfiction reading genres and provides authentic context for learning new words. Don't know if you noticed this or not, but QR codes are embedded in the lessons, so you can hold your cellphone up to it, and it will take, the link will take you to ancillary resources such as the pronunciation of words, review exercises, vocabulary word games, and self-tests. Teacher resources include guides for whole group and small group differentiation. For students who need resources for intervention and remediation, we are recommending Vocabulary for Success and Building Vocabulary from Word Roots. And as you can see from those sample lessons, the approach there is to fill in gaps in student knowledge and to reinforce fundamental skills. I know that the price there is hefty. It represents less than $10 per student per year for the full adoption of work, books which are consumable. You may decide that that's too over the moon, but I wanted to start with what the ideal program would look like. The students would be able to take those books home, take their cellphones out at home, and access those links. But we can sharpen our pencils and look for different implementation strategies if the funding would necessitate that. I'm already thinking about ways to work on that. Not to mention the fact that I've already cut 6% off the shipping. I'm trying to negotiate downward. I've been working on that. It's still a staggering figure, I recognize that. But I believe it's an important program, and it will fill a gap that currently exists. Questions or work session?
Work session. Yeah, can I just make a recommendation?
Yes.
Is there a way for us to have a demonstration on that?
Of the QR code?
Yeah, the QR code, and particularly the audible vocabulary and the pronunciation.
Yes, in fact, if you follow the embedded link, you can do it yourself with your cellphone, but I'd be happy to demonstrate for you at the work session.
Yeah, unbelievably, I'm horrible at QR codes.
Okay. Well, maybe you need to update your QR reader.
But that would be really helpful.
I'm happy to do it.
Extra resources that you provide.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
That was great.
Yeah, it was, yes.
Okay, now I have CTE. I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name's Sarah Frye, and I'm the Career and Technical Education Supervisor. I'd like to start by congratulating Megan Brill on her new position as AP at Kettle Run. Megan is an agriculture teacher and the CTE department head at Kettle Run, and she's done a tremendous job, and we're going to miss her greatly, but we look forward to working with her in a new capacity.
Yes.
Thanks. That's great.
All right, I'd like to start by, tonight with the textbook adoption for marketing education. I'm here tonight with our department heads for Business and Marketing, Sandra Colvin and Melinda Pillar, who worked very diligently with the committee during this adoption. This is for our marketing program. The committee reviewed available choices. They correlated content with course competencies. They've also evaluated these selections in terms of supplemental student and teacher materials, the use of graphics, assignments, and real-world applications. The proposal in front of you represents seven titles to be used in eight courses. It includes all of the student and teacher supplementary resources and an estimated 8% shipping. This is a small adoption, so I don't quite have the negotiating power that Eileen does in getting those rates down. These books will be purchased in class sets, and they're currently on public display and will remain there until May 21st. The cost of this adoption is approximately $58,600. Any questions?
I just wanted to comment, your committee was great.
Oh, thank you.
Really, with parents, special ed teacher, and it was really good with the industry representative.
Great.
It's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Okay, you want to move to?
I will move right.
Yeah.
Yes.
So work session?
Yeah.
Okay. My next item is the Carl Perkins budget for the 2013-14 school year. The proposal in front of you was presented and approved by the CTE Advisory Council. Perkins' grant is a federal grant that's given to localities to improve, initiate, and modernize CTE programs. This, these dollars cannot supplant local dollars and cannot be used for material supplies or salaries. The budget is based on an allocation of $112,183.64, which is the current year allocation. We're always told to create our budget based on this year's dollars, and then in July, they'll be updated to current. And his, past history has shown, it stays within a couple thousand dollars of that amount. So I will review the budget with you. Included in this is money for professional development for a career pathways fair that we offer each February for our rising ninth graders to travel and see CTE and career pathways options available to them at the high school level. Assistance for student organizations for state and national competition expenses to help supplement the industry certification testing that we're doing for all our CTE completers. The implementation of two career coaches. It's a purchase service from Lord Fairfax, a partnership that we go in with them, and there's actually a person who is in our building four days a week for the entire school year to assist with career advisement. The purchase of 10 computers for the Health and Medical Sciences lab that are seriously dated computers. 3D printers, one for each high school so that our engineering students can actually create 3D models of their designs. And in our auto technology program, the all-data program and today's classroom curriculum, which help our students work in databases with scanners and with latest curriculum that's NAATEF approved, to keep that certification for that program. And then the last item was some commercial kitchen to help upgrade our, we have consumable kitchens, if you've been in the labs, they're consumable. So we want to put a few commercial items in there to help prepare ourselves or position ourselves to offer some upper-level culinary arts.
So where are we going to put those?
We're going to use, we're going to use the current labs, but I mean, we're talking, we're talking about the items that they would need to meet the competencies. We definitely don't have the funding to retool those in terms of commercial. But I think the teachers have been very creative. They've talked with some other localities about some steps that we can take to position ourselves to be able to offer another level.
Nice, thank you. And before you leave?
Sure.
I just want to say that we've been reading for the last month about all the great things that our CTE students are doing.
Very pleased.
You just got one today?
TSA.
The TSA students and the auto technology, I mean, it's great. So, yeah, good job.
Thank you, we're very excited. The teachers and students have been working hard, and Alexandra Wolf has been winning everywhere she goes.
Right.
So we're very hopeful that in June she'll continue her tour of victories, so.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes.
That's okay.
That's good of me.
All right, Carl Perkins?
Carl Perkins wanted? Okay.
Okay. All righty, Ms. Downs, you're back up again. Permanent full-time teaching position.
Yes. We'd like to request the school board authorize a full-time permanent teaching position. Administration is in the process of staffing for the 2013-2014 school year. The school district has teaching needs in ESL, foreign language, middle school, Kettle Run High School, and CTE due to the required economics and personal finance course. With only one position added from the FY14 budget, the associate superintendent is reducing positions in those schools that have low class size projections to meet the aforementioned teaching needs. However, the reductions are not enough to meet these needs. So we are requesting that to use instructional line funding for the secondary teachers' extra teaching periods to fund this position. The administration is anticipating that the extra period requests will be reduced in FY14, therefore absorbing the cost of the one teacher, which would be $65,213. We would hope that you would move this request to action tonight so we could begin to recruit. The position would be used for CTE or Kettle Run High School, I think combined, both.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and we already, so, okay. Then the next one.
I'd like to request a full-time permanent special education teaching position. Special education has also been looking at class sizes and staffing needs for the upcoming school year. The HM Pearson Elementary School has a need for a special education teacher. So we propose that we will take two instructional assistant special ed positions that are currently vacant, use the funding from those positions to create a full-time special education teaching position. So this would be a cost-neutral position, and the savings from the vacancies for the teacher would be $70,348.
We like cost-neutral.
Yes. And we're also requesting that you would move this item to action this evening.
Good.
Okay.
Do I stay here?
Stay there.
I will stay here for this one too. In front of you tonight's a resolution. We would like to sign contracts with our health insurance provider, Anthem, and also OptumRx. During the budget process, we discussed how we were going to have a separate company do our prescription drug management. That was a cost savings of approximately $800,000. So this action tonight would just make, move forward the signing of the contracts for Anthem and for OptumRx.
Right, I mean, we've already passed the budget.
Yes.
Which included?
All this.
All of this.
This is administration tie-up, right?
Right.
To put it into action, right. This is just tying the bow.
Right.
Any questions on that?
Everybody?
Yes.
Okay. You're done. Is this, all right, Ms. Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Tonight, we were asking that the board authorize the chairman to execute a guaranteed maximum price contract with the Whiting Turner Company, contracting company, in the amount of $569,704 for the demolition of the 1963 section of the 100, 200 wing of Falkir High School. Originally, this work was included in Phase 1. It was delayed while we reconsidered what we would do with that wing. Finally, it was decided that we would retain the 1979 portion and demolish the 1963 portion. And we did set aside cash. The funding is included as part of Phase 3 with bonds and cash, and part of the cash was the demolition. Yes, Ms. Kotov found $674,000 that was applied to the Phase 3 work, and $569,000 of it will go to this part of the project. Yeah, she, over a period of time, but she did work at finding that. And we are asking that you move this for action tonight because this work, as Mr. Bland reported, will be done this summer.
That's right.
And we need to move forward. Any questions?
I just have one question, or two. One was about the temporary wall that's going up on the 1979 portion, and that's a temporary wall because we anticipate some additional work being done, is that correct?
Right. Well, at this point, we have the architect working on the design for the 79. And if you recall, the only thing that's changing in the 79, we're not doing any renovation on the interior, other than the fact that we will have to bring it up to code as far as the restrooms go in the stairway to the second floor. We have included in this $569,000, $30,000 to button up that building. But what we hope to do, if we can get the design in time, we're going to have a meeting, Mr. Daryl, myself, we'll meet with the architect and the contractor, Whiting Turner, to see if there's any way we can actually have the work done without spending that $30,000. So we are hopeful that at the end of May, 1st of June, we expect to have that designed. So we are going to try to move that forward if we can. If we can't, from a timing perspective, we won't. Is Mr. Daryl shaking his head and saying I'm wrong?
No.
No.
Speak up if I'm wrong. I know, I know you're looking at us. Don't hesitate if I say something wrong to correct you.
And I also want to set expectations. What I don't see in here is anything that we discussed about that breezeway between sort of the weight room area and that 79 way, building. We don't have any of that in here, correct?
The, well, there's a current, there's a canopy that goes into that. There's a canopy that already goes between the gym or the athletic area and the 79 with the door, and that does, that's not going to change.
Okay.
That's the only thing.
That's going to remain.
That won't change.
That won't change. I just want to make sure.
Right, that doesn't, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, did I ask you to move this to action tonight?
Yes, you did. Okay, I think that's all of them, so, anybody want to make a motion?
Let me get right here. Okay. Do we have to make this move then?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the school board move information items number 11GHI and J to action for consideration and approval this evening.
Motion and a second, that the school board move information items 11GHI and J to action for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we move to action items.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve a permanent full-time teaching position to be paid from funds in the fiscal year 14 instructional budget.
Second.
Motion and a second, that the school board approve a permanent full-time teaching position to be paid from funds in the FY14 instructional budget. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we will move to the next one.
I move that the school board approve, excuse me, approve a permanent full-time special education teaching position to be paid from funds in the fiscal year 14 special education budget.
Second. Motion and a second, that the school board approve a permanent full-time special education teaching position to be paid from funds in the FY14 special education budget. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And that motion carries, and we move to the next one.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board authorize the chairman to sign the resolution awarding the medical insurance and prescription drug plan contract to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield and Optum RX respectively.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board authorize the chairman to sign the resolution awarding the medical insurance and prescription drug plan contract to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield and Optum RX respectively. Any discussion?
I just would like to respond to Ms. Baker's comment that the, this impact is much more broad than just five hundred thousand dollars. And you and I could get together and we can talk about that, but this is positioning us for a lot of different things. The Affordable Healthcare Act and the county will follow. They will follow eventually, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, one recommendation, maybe this fall, we look at another survey of our teachers or our staff, specifically on the question of compensation versus benefits.
I brought it up in the personnel committee meeting.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Any others? Okay. If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we move to the Whiting Turner contract.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board authorize the chairman to sign a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with the Whiting Turner Contracting Company in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars for demolition of the nineteen sixty-three section of the one hundred, two hundred wing.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board authorize the chairman to sign a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment with the Whiting Turner Contracting Company in the amount of five hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars for demolition of the nineteen sixty-three section of the one hundred, two hundred wing. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and that motion carries. And is there any other business to come before us tonight in open session?
No.
If not, then, motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Me adjourn. Sorry. I see.